Karen's about to lose.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Oh, I can charge my rate.
Yes, eh?
All right, where do we convene?
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and of the public. First of all, I wanted to say that you, I thought you did excellent work in the morning. You got a lot done. I've summarized that on the one page that we can get back to when we've finished on this last section here. But good progress and good results thus far. So, thank you all and thanks for the comments that came in from the public as well. I do want to highlight, and I'm holding this microphone like this because our AV folks are telling us that we really need to speak very directly into these microphones. These microphones apparently are like the ones, you know, that the singers have and they put it, you know, right up to their lips. And that's, and that's what this is set up to pick up. So, if you can tilt your microphones where you are, council members, and have it close by. Right. And especially when you're singing, that'll be great. So, we have one other area in the suggestions of goals that came forward from council members, which was a topic around parks and recreation. So, I think the first thing to do here is to check in whether there are three or more of you that would like to fashion a goal around parks and recreation. If that's one of the major themes that you'd like to have for this 2019, 2020 year, not that parks and recreation isn't important or anything else that isn't listed as a major city goal isn't important, it's really, you know, what are the focal points for this year that you're trying to highlight? So, I'm not trying to push this in one direction or another, but just to make clear to the public that, you know, if the council chooses not to pick up a goal in a particular, it doesn't necessarily mean it isn't important or that things won't continue to happen with parks and recreation, it's just that they didn't raise it to a level of a major city goal as a focal point for the year. And as we've discussed in past sessions, focus is your friend. Having fewer things that you actually get done, especially since you only have one year in the budget cycle here that you're looking at, is very helpful in terms of clarity to the community and the, in the communication and also in accountability for actually getting results on those things. So, just wanted to provide that sort of contextual framework about the goals here and how you're looking at them. So, coming to parks and recreation or any other goal topic that you'd like to bring up or add in that didn't get captured in the original suggestions from you, now's the time to comment about that.
So, I'll go ahead and start my, I think, I think it works into two, two areas for me as far as parks and rec is the Solvang master plan, which will directly correlate with the planning of the parks. So, my concern was when we sit, when we look at what we're going to do in the parks, that we have that master plan so that everything we do kind of goes towards that. And then on the other side, it can roll right into our goal with fiscal responsibility, which was looking at possibly regionalizing the rec department, maybe combining with Beelton, and then also the outsourcing of the maintenance and janitorial services, those, the department overall. And I think we talked about that when we talked about the fiscal, fiscal goals and whatnot, that that's something that I think should be looked at as possible cost savings, consolidation and whatnot.
Am I close enough? Actually, one of the things that I think we should consider with respect to the master plan is the idea of Tivoli, which is an inherent part of Danish culture and Copenhagen as a city. There's been a lot of talk about this in years past. I don't know what that would look like. Maybe it encompasses our downtown park, maybe it's something else. But I think if we could figure out how to create a miniature Tivoli reminiscent of that, that, you know, kind of embodies or embraces that idea, I think that would be very attractive to tourists especially.
And Tivoli is T-I?
V.
V?
V.
Oh, Tivoli, okay. Good thing we're not a Russian town.
One of the things, one of the things about Tivoli is that it, it's a place where the Danes go to eat, shop, amuse themselves, be entertained, rock, I mean, they have these outdoor auditoriums, what do they call those places?
Amphitheaters.
Amphitheaters, that's the word. So, I don't know how we would do that within the confines of our city. Maybe we have to find a different place. But that would be something, I think, that would be, it would do, it would be very attractive for the residents, a place for them to go as well as for tourists.
Yeah, I think our park could use some major renovation and, and perking up because it's a central point in town and it does not scream out Solvang to me.
I love this topic. Thank you for bringing this up. The reason why this is important is because Yule Fest is also a very Danish thing and we tend to do this in our park. So, I think that needs to be incorporated into the design of Solvang, the Solvang Park.
Other, other comments from council members?
If we had enough money, I think it'd be great to give that park an entire facelift and either turn it into with that, the same pavement that you see in these Central European towns or Northern European towns, that where the grass was to make it something like, that looks more like a Central European, or no, I keep saying Central, I'm sorry, a Northern European town center would be a kind of neat. We all have a million dreams we want for this town. If we had a lot of money, it'd be a lot of fun to make a lot of, do big changes like that. But I think that's, that is the focal point, especially at Christmas time. I've always thought either to do something like Cambria or do something really, really Scandinavian in that park to make it a showcase of Solvang, more than just a place for people to sit and listen to music, would be pretty cool.
So, are you referring to like the, the light show type thing that they do in Cambria?
That or, yes. Although that light show is, is not cheap and that's, they've got quite a following. But if you haven't been to Cambria, it's pretty spectacular.
I think they have over a million lights.
Yeah.
They're in a setting where you can actually kind of control access and so they charge.
To get incorrect and then you can eat.
Charge entry fees and it's actually a money-making enterprise.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's exactly what we're talking about. I think if you, if you have a plan set, then you can slowly go about when you have to make upgrades like the trees that are, you know, we chopped down and whatnot. When we go to do something, then you go towards that. So, you're going to do 15 things. You're going to start with this one because we can afford it and then next year you do the next one. But it all goes towards that master plan. So, I think we have to have that master plan and then we can go towards it, at least for Solvang Park. But that's also on, on a bigger scale.
Yeah.
I mean, the other aspect, like I said, the other aspect is, is there's definitely, I think there's some cost savings that we can find in this department that could help us have the money to be able to upgrade Solvang Park. So, that would be my other point.
Okay, just, just so staff's clear, is the focus for this next year just on Solvang Park since it is right in the core of the tourism area, one of the critical factors of the downtown district because of Yule Fest?
Yeah, I think earlier in there we had some discussions around some other items like Hans Christian Park with regard to pickle bar, pickleball, or the most recent thing, I think, believe was the pub tracks. So, things like that to look at.
So, I guess one, one question for council and staff around this one is, how do you see this relating to the overall master plan that was the very first goal that you formulated this morning? Are you envisioning Solvang Park master plan being a separate master plan or in, rolling this up into that? Or what is your intention and what's reasonable to achieve in the course of the next year?
Yeah, I, I think it's a subset of the master plan in the sense that it needs its own plan, right? Especially if we're going to incorporate something like a Tivoli, which is a hybrid of a residential park and a place for tourists. So, it probably does need, it does have some weird crossover with the master plan, but it does need its own master plan.
So, I, I guess what I'm trying to do is just raise the question of whether you want to consider this as a separate major city goal or if you'd like to, in essence, put this planning around the Solvang Park as a bullet point, if you will, under the create a master plan for Solvang? Do you have a?
Well, I think the, the problem being, I think the Solvang Park kind of needs more of an immediate.
Attention.
Attention than, than, we, I don't know that we have the time to wait for the entire master plan to be developed and solving plan. I think the Solvang Park, particularly of all the parks that we have and whatnot, is, is very key to solving and that may need more immediate attention than waiting because right now we're sitting on those three dead trees and I know that everyone wants to do something with it. So, that's my only concern is that we're not, if we don't push that or at least plan for it, what are we going to do in the meantime?
Can, can I ask our fellow council members where, and I'm just, and I'm, I don't know and I'm only curious, where on a scale of one to 10, what priority the Solvang Park is? Karen, what do you think? How would you rate it, 1 through 10, 10 being the most important thing to work on?
Out of everything?
Yeah.
Or out of parks and rec?
Out of everything.
Out of everything, I think that, well, we have so many other big projects, so I'd put it around seven or eight because we have so many more important projects that we need to keep our city functioning.
What do you think, Ryan?
You, you can blow tons of money on a park.
I know.
And, and we already have a lot of money that, that we need to spend. So, we don't, we're not just sitting on a huge cash cushion to, I mean, these are all, these are all great ideas, all great things to focus on. Some low-hanging fruit to do in the meantime, I think is totally appropriate. But I, I kind of question the whole thing around a total park redo, revamp. I mean, someone else would know more about that than I about the kind of costs we're talking about there, but it doesn't sound cheap.
But I think it would be one of the neatest things that we could do.
Oh, definitely, yes.
Oh, yeah, it'd be great.
That park just a showcase would just be so neat.
I, I almost see it falling under like some of our branding because, I mean, it's really like, you know, where are we going? What's our presentation? And, and the park is, especially the one in the center of town, it's, it's one of the key focal points, you know?
Chris?
I'm so convoluted on these issues, aren't I? First, I think it needs to be spruced up for purposes of branding and also for Yule Fest. It has to be more user-friendly. I, I think we wanted to put a Christmas tree there, right, and, and really?
That's the plan.
And maybe that's a nice short-term goal.
Well, that's, that's already the words.
Secondly, longer term, an intermediate goal would be?
I can't hear you.
You still can't hear me? Short, intermediate goal might be to change the layout or design and incorporate it into something bigger. I don't know what that looks like. That's something that you guys can think of. And then longer term, I would like to see it incorporated into, to a Tivoli idea. Again, I don't know what that looks like.
So?
So, I think on the, on the short range, we're looking at some maybe cosmetic things that we can do to make it nicer for right now and then work it into the master plan, basically, is what we're looking at. Because obviously we don't have the money to revamp the whole thing.
Okay. We can, we can come back. I'll, I'll talk with staff and we'll, we'll come back with some short-term ideas and then we'll incorporate it into the broader master planning as, as a component, given the unique nature of its position in the town.
Great.
Okay, so, I think capturing this here or trying to at least?
And while Don's typing, I'll just clarify that as you guys talked about the financial component and controlling costs and regional options, we, we can roll Parks and Rec into that, those.
Financial goals.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think this may be an area where private, public-private partnerships might be able to come into play again. I don't know how, but the idea that if there's a development that's going close to or next door to that park, then they would have to contribute to the beautification and, and the redevelopment of the park itself.
Okay, so, what I'm hearing is the near, the current year goal would be one of sprucing up, oops, spruce up Solvang Park and some of the things that you're looking at accomplishing in that context are ways that you could have some potential cost savings in doing that and also, whoops. There we go. And, and rolling it into the broader Solvang city master plan. That includes some opportunities that you're looking at.
Look, I'm not trying to belabor this point, but I think, as you were saying, it is central to the character and branding of solving and a lot of events can and perhaps should be in that park. So, with that in mind, yeah, we do need to spruce it up as quickly as possible, make it more user-friendly, right, for Yule Fest. I don't know, I, I was thinking of a, a lot of the events that we're trying to attract, they want to start and stop, for example, in the park or afterward congregate in the park. I think we need to focus on that, getting it ready for that.
Sprucing up and, and making more useful for events, okay? So, let me just do a read here. How many of you would like to have a major city goal that would be headlined by what you see in green and would incorporate the elements that are highlighted in yellow? Show of hands, yeah? Okay. All right. Other, not, not to try to add anything more to your plate, but just to call the question. Are there any other goals or things that you, that you did not submit, but you have thought of that you'd like to have you and your colleagues discuss before we move on to the next phase here? Would you like to take a moment to review what you've got on the plate thus far as your major goals from your work to this point?
Yes.
Okay. Let me do that. All right, so?
Wait, yes. I know this is a sticky subject and I don't know how to, to approach it other than to throw it out there for discussion and that is perhaps reviewing the sphere of, proposing going forward with another sphere of influence or updating our current sphere of influence for that lower village area that we've been describing earlier?
As in lower village down the hill?
Yeah, the west side of town.
So, that gets a discussion of, you know, kind of touching base on maybe some of the things that were found of value in the last annexation study and then also the, the big topic of urban growth boundaries.
Exactly.
Which I think will be a big deal.
It is a big deal, exactly.
Next year, so.
So, is there a way to bring that into our discussion?
That's part of?
Well, yeah, it's part of the discussion, so.
You can add it to the, what economic development point that we have up there?
Should that fall under economic development? As a strategy, I thought, it doesn't make sense as a strategy or a goal.
You want it to be a separate self?
Well.
Development of the west side of Solvang.
Yeah, I think it needs its own attention, you know, its own focus. Because clearly, the community as a whole probably wants to weigh in on that.
So, consider options regarding potential annexation?
I don't know. I thought it's already part of Solvang.
Okay, okay.
Well, that's part of our urban boundaries discussion.
Yeah, but I think he's just referring to the part that's already, I think, right?
It's already in Solvang?
It's not annexing or anything.
Yeah, I'm not trying to expand Solvang. I just want to see what can we, how can we better use, what's the best use of that land going forward for the next five, 10? Yeah, there you go. The next five or 10 or 15 years.
So, you're talking about on the west end of town where it's already in Solvang, not the sphere of influence, not annexation, just looking at what options are there for rezoning or just reusable land in the long term?
Best use, yeah, and then incorporating that into the master plan.
Okay. I think that's something that can be taken a look at in the master plan.
So, that sounds like that would be probably one of the bullet points under the master plan preparation. Does that accord with the majority of you that you'd like to see that master planning effort and what's scoped out for that by staff to incorporate that component? Or?
I, I think there's several elements that you have to look at there. I mean, you have, you have options that are there in the west end that are already within our existing sphere of influence. Then you still have the bigger elephant in the room, which is the, the idea around urban growth boundaries, which I believe will be on the ballot 2020 regardless. And, and then, but then all that also plays in with, with the overall infill of, of the city as well. It's also an economic development thing because you're talking about if you pursue anything down there, what is, what are we going to, what would be allowed, you know, use for any, any type of project that goes down there? And how is it going to be done in a way that's a benefit to the community, not a detriment?
Okay, so, do you want to wrap any of those additional components into this or just leave it, this, leave it as this element as a bullet within the mass, overall solving master plan? I just didn't know how far you wanted to collectively as a council step into this, these other issues about urban growth.
Why don't we just put it, I mean, in my opinion, just put it under the master plan as a separate line item that says specifically west end Solvang development.
I think we need a more extensive staff report on, you know, on just this, this whole topic itself deserves, you know, a lot of attention and, and really educating the, the community on what the options are that we, that we do have in front of us and what the, what the cons and pros are of, of anything that we choose to do.
So, then, separate from the master plan, if, if I just heard that, Mr. Mayor, then that was more overall looking at sphere of influence, urban growth boundaries, annexation and how that all plays in on the west end of town specifically?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Because I mean, that really is all just one big topic right there.
Yeah.
I don't know what, what title you want to give it, but.
Yeah, and, and so, if I'm hearing you, then what I thought I heard was some deliverable in the, within the year would be some review of what all of it means, what, what, what's existing, what's possible, what, what other options are for the conversation to advance, understanding that by next year, it's likely that something along the lines of urban growth boundary is likely on the 2020 ballot. Okay.
I'm tending to, this is grabbing it. And is this, are you, what, just so the public understands this, you, you want to hear what the options are, including the pros and cons of each versus, or do you have a direction that you'd like this discussion to go?
I, I think just a really, you know, detailed, adequate, unbiased report that provides all these different types of options that are available to the council, both in terms of economic development and potential uses of the area already within our sphere of influence, you know? Urban growth boundaries. It's kind of a huge topic, so.
It would also include infill.
Yeah, it goes into infill development, I mean, all these things.
Yeah, you might want to throw that in there, infill development. Economic and infill development?
That's a can of worms.
I know, I love it.
And I'm, you know, I, I just want to, I mean, again, with the, with the long list we've got going, this, I agree, this ends up being a, a very big topic. This is a major workload as, within the context of everything else that's going on. And I'm mindful of capacities of, of the organization as well as overall costs of, of things. So, for example, this, this whole dynamic here as of right now, and we can come back with, with costing on it, but isn't something that's contemplated within the budget or any of the priority discretionary items that you'll, you'll review Monday night.
All right, I think it's one of the, it's, I think it's a huge topic. I think we should, we should be proactive versus reactive on it. And it's, it's going to be an issue regardless. So, I think it's best to educate ourselves and the public as best as possible so that, you know, we, we get the best possible outcome and decisions being made.
I, I have to agree. I think we need to start chipping away at this issue, this topic rather.
So, this sounds like it really, because of the scope of effort that you're looking at, out of, out of standalone to the question earlier, does it go under the overall master plan or does it stand out on its own? Sounds like it has, it's, it's sizable enough that it needs to be its own goal. Is that fair?
It's almost a separate vision. It's actually a separate vision. It's like creating a whole nother part of the city.
Okay, so this, if that captures it for you for now, does that give enough clarity for staff to develop a work plan of what that would mean potentially and some options of how you could evaluate that and come back?
I'm looking more for?
I think so.
Yeah, more of a high level.
I, I, I think so. And if it's at a very high level, it's educational in nature to start out.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I, but it is a gigantic topic.
Right.
It's a huge topic and this is, in my mind, something that would be, you know, it's a, it's a multi-year effort and it sounds like there's already some interest in the community that's going to drive a big part of this already. And so, you know, being a part of that partnering with them then might be where that's something that makes this more manageable from a city staff perspective, is, is really working with those groups to make sure that it's something that works holistically.
And a lot of times, again, this comes from the leadership council that we just attended, it's possible to talk to developers or whatever you want to call them, that come into town, they want to work in our community and get them to do that for us, get them to pay for it, come up with ideas. We don't have to take any of them, but in this respect, they, they basically reduced our workload and made it a little easier. It was, we tell them what we want and then they go out and do it as part of their development strategy.
You know, in some other cities, they do things of that nature, that may be a charrette, you know, where developers come in with planning people and they sort of sketch out, hey, what would the community think of this? What would they think of that? A little chance to sort of provide some input with ultimately, you know, the professional staff of the city having the responsibility to evaluate the pros and cons and?
Yes.
And the analytical side of that. So, you have an independent point of view, but it's a way of mirroring those two resources?
Yes, because the city doesn't have limitless resources or time. So, I make, I think that's, that hits it on the head.
But we, but we've done something like that where, for example, where, where New Front, the New York Frontiers came in, they did all the red rings, they brought everything else before us, went through the planning commission. It's kind of the same thing.
On a smaller scale, right.
And couldn't you identify if you knew kind of generally what you wanted on the west end of town, couldn't you pursue some form of developers agreement or things like that that would kind of accomplish some of these things?
Well, it depends on what you want to accomplish exactly. And so, that's where the, the effort of identifying what's, what the goal is, then, yeah, then there's, there's lots of, of options to get to where you want to go. What I think right now I'm hearing is that there's interest simply in somewhat of an educational component about what, what is the universe of possibility so that there, the council's better educated, the public's better educated, so that you can identify what some goals might be. So, you know, bringing a developer in to master plan a whole section of town is a possibility so long as that's, you know, the direction that you want to go in.
Right, right.
And so, you know, figuring out how to do it before figuring out what it is that you want to do is a little, that, that's, that would be a challenge for us.
Well, that's why you almost need to do some, some of all this other, you know, work here, work here to kind of educate and figure out the direction that you want to go with it and kind of get into where you can have those kinds of conversations. You know, I wouldn't want to prejudge any, any foregone conclusion or anything like that. I'm just saying, you kind of got to start somewhere and, and back into it and see where we want to go with it.
Well, and, and so, visioning what that might be might be appropriate under the master planning process because that would be the process whereby you're identifying these districts of town and that can be added under that scope so that now there's some conversation around what, you know, if, if we were dreaming up things that could go down there, what would that look like? And we'll do that in the, in the context of also looking at urban growth boundaries to protect, you know, property within, within Solvang.
I think you're on the right track with that idea. Do you want that to then fold in under that topic, the master plan, or do you want that to stand alone like that?
I, I think at this point, what I'm hearing is we'll fold it into the master plan. We can do some additional educational outreach, work with the groups that are looking at urban growth boundaries and just start the conversation of what that means.
Right. It's perfect. I think that was definitely an item last year that saw some of the political apathy for Solvang. To sum it up real quick. To sum it up real quick.
All right, okay. So, are there any other topics like this that you'd like to bring up, you know, sort of elephants in the room kind of category here, that are important to get out on the So what, what, this is the list that has been, if you want to see a scroll through of what you've been looking at thus far, so I've made a composite list here of the things, so if, would it help you if we just took a moment here for you to look through and see if this is on target for you, because what we'll be doing next is moving on to the thoughts that you and the staff have about key factors for success in getting these goals done and how you're going to work together to make that happen? So I'll just scroll down on this at whatever pace you'd like.
Can you add lot, some attention to Lot 73 under master? Where, where do you think, I'm sorry, where is Lot 72?
Yeah, it's in the Olive Toll Mason Grove.
Yeah, that's not the one I'm talking about. What's the one with the olive trees down below?
Oh.
According to my understanding, the Mission property stops halfway down that delta.
No, the Mission owns some of that avocado area, that, that olive grove area that they tried growing olives on it 10 years ago.
So they own the entire bottom area?
Not all of it, I can double check the church.
Let's, does somebody, can somebody explain that, the land trust and how that works? And what, if that falls under our purview, the sphere of influence?
Maybe Joni might know.
Lisa would know as much as I, and, and Matt would.
Can you get a?
Stick your name.
Holly Owen, planning director, I imagine I'll be corrected by my, my staffmates here because it's got a little bit of a history. The Lot 72 was a parcel that was supposed to be part of a subdivision, and it was to be a park or open space for them. When the subdivision was built, they decided they didn't, they didn't want that park, so the city owned it at the time, I believe, and then they leased it to the Santa Barbara Land Trust.
Santa Barbara.
Trust for.
Historic Preservation.
Trust for Preservation, who has a 50-year lease on it, and we're in about year 10 of that lease. I believe that we, there could be some passive use of it by the public, but it's not for necessarily, and the city can use it occasionally for events. Am I correct about that? All this came before my time and.
So we, we can research this further because actually several years ago I did look at the, the tract map that was recorded to create the Village Collection subdivision, and that's where Lot 72 in that subdivision was, is, is the lot that the city owns. But I do believe there was a lot 71 and 73 that had some other odd uses, they weren't like, they weren't for single-family homes, but, so we can research that further. But, yeah, so the city, as Holly mentioned, the city leased the land to the Santa Barbara Trust for Historic Preservation, I think it's like actually an odd 48-year lease or something, and we're in about year 10 of that. And they have a caretaker who oversees any use on that property, his name is Tom Walton, he used to actually was our part-time code off, code enforcement officer, and he is also the caretaker for the Grist Mill area that is owned by the State Parks Department. And my understanding is that they have some kind of an agreement with the Santa Barbara Trust for Historic Preservation also, and so they have the same caretaker over these two pieces of property. I don't know if they're exactly contiguous, they're very close proximity to each other, but I'm not sure if they, I don't think they actually touch, but I'm, so I don't know if I'm answering your question, so I apologize if I'm not, but.
So it turns into a state park.
Lot 72 and 73?
No, just down below.
Just down below, right, and we know, okay. So Lot 72 can be used for special events on a limited use basis?
Yeah, so many of the special events that happen in Solvang, we provide them with the information for the caretaker, his contact information, and there's a certain area or portion of that lot that they have designated can be used for parking. So right now, my understanding is the only use of it is for like, kind of like overflow parking, and, and the event sponsor pays like a thousand dollars or some kind of fee to them for the use of that area.
To who?
To the Santa Barbara Trust for Historic Preservation.
That we leased to?
Yeah, yeah, we have leased to them, they're in control of it, and so.
So it belongs to Solvang, but we leased it to them.
Why, yeah, why, why would they be making money off of?
Well, that'd be a question for them, but it's falls within their rights as per the agreement that the city entered into several years ago.
I'd be happy, I have a big file in my office that I haven't actually delved into over these years, although I'm familiar with the general concept, I'd be happy to summarize that, send you some maps, we can all get briefed on, and, and talk to some folks who actually remember perhaps what transpired.
And then their caretaker, the caretaker, who is the caretaker an employee of?
Santa Barbara Trust for Historic Preservation.
And who pays his salary?
Santa Barbara Trust for Historic Preservation.
So, as, as Holly said, we'll, we'll, we'll look into it a little bit further.
I think in the interest of time, we should.
Yeah, yeah, in the near term, we'll come back to you with more information and brief counsel.
Okay, so to just summarize where you are at the moment, you've got one goal on create a master plan for Solvang's future, it's got components that are listed there that you've developed, you have another goal about developing fiscal policies that guide the use of city resources, you have an additional goal about determine future financial needs and required revenues and other funding sources, including reserve requirements to fulfill them, another goal about being more effective by doing more with less, and one about enhanced walkability, safety and enjoyment of public streets and spaces with some areas that you'd like to have evaluated, and you have develop and evaluate capital and operational options for new water and wastewater treatment services, and to spruce up Solvang Park and make, make it more useful for events. Pretty hefty list, what do you think, is that within your ability to lift, or is that getting on the brink or over the edge of what you can deliver?
I think, I, we can lift it right at the edge.
With the details of, of how high the lift will be and what the lift will cost coming after you develop the work plans around these?
Exactly.
Okay. Any other commentary from council about this, does this feel like the right set of priorities for your community? Are you wishing to provide any further prioritization amongst these? What are your thoughts?
I mean, at least, at least addressing the public input that we receive, we get the common categories, as staff organize them, as sphere of influence, economic development, planning and building, customer service, traffic and bicycle infrastructure, financial stability, additional revenue resources, water and wastewater, and cannabis, and I think most of it is all covered in these kind of high-level, high-level goals.
Okay, so is it the will of the council that this would be the work product then that you would take to a subsequent city council meeting to actually agendize for formal adoption as your goals for 2019, 2020, and public could comment if they wish, or you can make additional modifications if you feel that those are warranted? Is that where we are at the action step here?
Where are we at with the, if you go back up further, I think we had some discussion around branding.
The discussion around branding, I think, is really, well, it's sort of got rolled up, at least as I was hearing you, into this discussion about a master plan for the, for the future because you're looking at this whole issue of how do you preserve and build on the Danish heritage and pursue vibrant ways to update the city and create compelling experiences, that's essentially where that would fold, but you don't have a specific goal or a specific subitem about branding. Branding can be in and of itself a significant exercise with marketing, research, et cetera, that goes on. Some of that will need to happen because if you're going to develop a master plan, you're going to be thinking about, well, what do we want the city to be, you know, and how do we want it to look? And so some of that's going to get rolled up into that process. But to answer your specific question, I don't see anything in here where you've specifically put as a tasking item branding.
Yeah.
That might roll out of these other efforts.
Yeah, branding's more of a strategy, isn't it?
Economic development, I mean, there's several different areas, I mean, we've talked about the gateways in a town, there's, there's the parks, there's the overall feel and consistency, there's just anything down from logo design to website resources, public information, our website's pretty weak on, on, like, for example, this document center that's, that's there, but it's kind of hard to navigate and stuff like that. So there might be a lot of, I know there was several items in the category one area of the budget, starting to address some of the online resources and things like that. There's also the idea of obtaining maybe a public information officer that can kind of go through these items and, and make sure they're really brushed up and, and communicate to the public so that, you know, they understand what's, what's being done, what's being accomplished, and why, just to kind of create that overall feeling of transparency and accountability and, and knowing what's going in the city. I don't know, I'm just looking at some of these, but some of those items were in the, in the budget, I just don't know if we should fit that in here somewhere, maybe David.
Is that a separate vision or does it fit under a vision?
Well, I, I think what you're speaking to, Mr. Mayor, is under the budget, we included a line item specific to like PIO, developing a PIO office, and what that was, from staff's perspective, would, would go to do is do an assessment of where are we in terms of best practices as it relates to, you know, city communications to both the public and potentially the, you know, our tourism drive as well. And so I think that was our thinking internally, but I've heard, as I've talked with individual council members, I've heard conversations, and I think Councilmember Darness brought it up at a prior meeting, talking about, you know, just better effort of us getting information out, better, better, you know, better, better use of resources in order for us to broadcast the good things that are going on with Solvang. And so that, that's the intent of that line item, but I want to just clarify that that on Monday that's in there is, is a pretty narrow focus, and as I've heard these conversations, if, if you want as a goal to take a broader perspective look at how we're relaying information, that we're telling the story of Solvang, now would be the time to, you know, create that as a more dynamic goal that we can at least get down the path of on this year's, or start the foot off on this year so that we're doing a better job of outreach into the community and, and just, you know, newsletters and, and.
Yeah, I, I, I think I know where you're going with this, and I, I like the idea of its own heading, you know, how do we create better government, more interactive government, more responsive government in terms of the community and, and the businesses so that they can reach back out to us and say, hey, we'd like to see more of this, or we feel this, you know, strongly about that, at the same time, we have a way to reach out to them and, and tell the story more effectively. And not just to the locals, but also to the tourists, maybe that comes under a whole new heading, you know, what kind of government do we want to be? And when I said less is more, that's a philosophy of government, I suppose, you want to put it under that?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I was, I, I wasn't meaning to say philosophy of government, I was more saying that, you know, the information that's on the website and the way that we're reaching out to the residents saying, look at these good things going on that we're doing, that, that was what I was talking about, more best practice.
And how would you do that? Would you do that through a more effective website and, and communication platform?
Yes.
And that, that would come under better government?
Yes.
Okay. One thing I don't think we, we addressed, and I'm sorry, I should have brought this up sooner, is the idea of a smart city. I've been pounding the table on this because to me, this is the future for, I think, of cities in general, and if we want to be more like Denmark and, and more like Copenhagen in terms of Danish culture and, and doing more with less and things of that nature, we need to figure out how to make smart cities work for us. And that, that idea is not an easy one to, to define or to explain, so I don't know if this is the best place to do that, but I certainly think we need to incorporate that into this master plan community, the idea where we're using data platforms and predictive analytics so that the government can operate more efficiently, you know, was doing more with less in terms of resources and staffing, like this, again, this is all based on what the data is telling us, as we collect it is saying, this is where we need to deploy more research, resources and, and use our assets more efficiently. So I think that smart cities has a, an opportunity of cutting costs, operating costs from a government standpoint. From the business community's standpoint, I think there's a way to help them improve their retailing and provide better experiences for tourists as they come in. Again, that's a whole separate topic in terms of how do smart cities expand e-commerce and the digital economy, and how's that make it better for residents? I would like nothing better than to see residents staying in solving, living in solving, as opposed to having to commute all the way to Santa Barbara or some other town. If they could work from here, then we get to keep those dollars here, we get to keep, we have, we get to improve the quality of life, again, through the smart cities idea. But I think that needs more discussion and incorporation into our master plan.
So other points of view from council members, I'm, I'm just trying to capture some themes up here, if you were to formulate this as a goal, I don't think, I haven't heard you all decide that you wanted to do that yet, but more conversation among council members, and then we need to call the question about whether a majority of you wishes to articulate this as a goal, and, and I guess if you would do, then it'd be, you can come in on staffs and come back with, hey, here are some practical, near-term things that you could actually get done in the course of the next, next year, and here's how you would phase it with your master planning efforts, you know, the other things that you've got on your plate that would be relevant for linking into this. So comments from other council members, and then we'll get a read on how many of you wish this to be a major city goal? The number is increasing here on the list, so we want to be cognizant of that, but comments from others? Is this wording relevant to you for consideration of this as a major city goal? Or do you want to tweak it before we call the question on, you know, how many of you would like to go forward with this as a goal?
I would like to say, instead of using smart cities, say implementing smart city, and just leave it at that, yeah, you could say technologies, because it's not just the hardware, it's, it's the strategies in terms of software, and then data, using data analytics and predictive analytics and applications to create a, a more, a, a different user experience. So for example, when, when people come in as tourists. So, for example, when, when people come in as tourists, they can use their phone or cellphone to figure out, to navigate where to go to find out whatever it is that they want, um, their favorite wine tasting room or hotel, or they could essentially plan everything right off of their phone. So, smart cities is really about a whole new way of thinking and doing, both for government businesses and communities. And I think that's where the kids from, uh, Daniel's Brooks College had a lot to offer, because they were bringing back what they had experienced, what they knew, to us and saying, we can do this here. Now, it's not going to happen overnight, and we can start to implement pieces of that over time.
Yeah, I would put that as a bullet point under, um, our, uh, development.
Master plan development?
Master plan development, I'd, I'd put that as a bullet point. I mean, I like the enhanced public engagement, because that's a complete PR piece, that's very necessary and doable, really doable, but, you know, you explore opportunities for implementing, uh, smart city approaches, that's great, but I would definitely put it under, as a bullet point, under our master plan.
David, if I may, can I ask your opinion on this?
I think Councilmember Dernis is right, that this is the way the city using, I mean, the way of the future, using more data to drive decisions, um, and I, I, you know, I'm, I'm wholeheartedly into it, I've used a lot of data in my past. Right now, if you look at a lot of the things that are on your goal list right now, it's a lot of foundation-building items, and so, as we're looking at just at the base level of what's really our liabilities, what are our financial policies in order to tackle those liabilities, what, what's a, what's a vision for the future of, of Solvang 2.0, those are sort of foundational items, and smart cities is sort of, once that foundation is built, now use that stuff to really accelerate what you're doing. And so I think in a longer-term plan, absolutely, we should be looking at that stuff, and some of the things we are, so, um, you know, going to online services with, like, digital permitting or, or online plan check, I think is, fits under that category, uh, and so I think as an ethos, if we were, you know, making, trying to make decisions as best we can under a, you know, best-practice local government, then I think that's absolutely the direction that we should be going in, uh, trying to do some of those really high-functioning things that some of the world's leading cities are doing, we're probably just not there yet from an infrastructure perspective, you know, both, both from an internal operations perspective, as well as just a base level of, of building the foundation of how we get to that, that higher vision.
Yeah, I think it's almost a way of thinking. I think every project that comes along, you need to think, is there a smarter way to do this? Even if it, it's down to putting in lighting or whatever, are we going to do solar so that we can capture it and reuse it, or, or sell it, or whatever the case is, there's, there's, the smart city, I think we just have to, when we're doing something, we need to think about it. If we're going to tear up the streets, do we lay cable down, you know? We've talked about that, so there's all those aspects of it, but it definitely should be a part of the, I think it's under the master plan, just something to consider on every decision we make and work towards it.
I think that's the ethos you were talking about. So let's move it.
So let's see, how many of you would like to have a goal around the topic of enhancing public engagement with at least the first paragraph that's there? Raise your hand. I see a majority, okay. And then, uh, there's a sub-question here, uh, whether you want this explore opportunities for implementing smart cities to sit here, to go up into the master planning, or to, um, be something that would be picked up in future times, not in 2019?
I think what Ms. Waite said is fine, just put it under...
Put it under the master plan.
Yeah, because it's something we do as we go along.
Okay.
We just try to incorporate as much as we can.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay. Okay. All right, um, are you complete for now with your goals?
This is kind of odd, but, I mean, our, and it can come later, but I don't see any low-hanging fruit in this, that we could probably try and, some short-term things that we can do right away, not to show people that you're doing things, but just other projects and whatnot that we might want to knock off of the list, um, and work on as well. These are very grand ideas that we have and grand plans, and I think it's very, very important we're doing it. I'm just trying to think if there's any other smaller things that we can do that'll benefit the people.
I think, I think Robert, um...
I think that...
This is like the vision, right? So I think what's going to happen is they're going to go back and say, hey, these are all our plans, these are the two we're going to get, three we're going to get done next year that we want to push forward, that it's our priority, and there will be some that they will get done, that's what I think.
All right.
These are the guiding principles. So it's like, here's where we want to go, or we want to end up. To do that, there, we need these strategies that produce certain short-term, intermediate, long-term projects that low-hanging fruit...
And that'll come out from what you guys bring up.
That's what I'm hoping, yeah.
Okay. All right. Strong work here. Just be sure I save that. A lot of, a lot of hard work I just further went into that, don't want to lose anything there. Okay, so, the next topic here is, to have you reflect for a moment, uh, you know, you've got a lot of goals here, a lot of things you're seeking to accomplish. This is really an invitation for you, and, and if you wish, turn to your staff and, and ask your staff, uh, what do you think are going to be the key factors for success to achieve the goals? It's one thing to have goals, it's quite another thing to actually get them done. So I'm wondering if we might, uh, go around to each of the council members and ask you, uh, you may have several key factors for success in mind, why don't you just pick the most compelling one in your mind? We'll go around, get one from each of you, and then see if there's, if there's any that didn't get picked up by somebody else, we'll, um, we'll hear from them.
Besides money?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think it really, yeah, this is, you know, what is it going to take in terms of, um, how, as you view it, how you work, how you work with the staff, how you work with the community, you know, what are those things about how you're going to get stuff done? So why don't you think about that for just a moment and see if you've got something that comes to mind? Businesses always ask themselves this, they say, hey, we're, okay, we want to accomplish all these things, but what are going to be our key factors for success? Because if we don't have those figured out and we don't have those nailed, our chances of getting these things accomplished are much, you know, less. So I'd invite you to think about what those might be, and if staff wants to chime in with things that you think are going to be, uh, important for key factors for success on these goals, add them.
Okay, well, I'll just, um, I'll throw out a non-financial key factor for success for achieving these goals will, would include, um, lack of micromanagement from the council. Um, I think it'd be very important to allow the city manager to direct his own department heads, um, they're sitting here, he's sitting here, and they've, they've heard what we've considered to be our major goals, and I think we should let them go with it, with, uh, as little micromanagement as possible.
What I suggest that we do is, why don't we go around and capture these from folks, and then if you have discussion, whoops, uh, if you have discussion about these, where you have questions about what somebody's saying, we'll pick those up, rather than just assuming that all these are accepted by all of you, but, um, um, I'm just going to capture these. Robert, would you like to go next?
Sure, the one that comes to mind immediately is, uh, these goals need to, for lack of a better term, sold to the, to the residents of Solvang, to get them on board with what we're doing, and not to show, but to just, good, there you go, engage and let them know that what our priorities are, and, and hopefully they're on board of what our priority, I mean, we're all elected by the residents, and their, their goals are our goals. So it's a matter of, of transitioning to, to share these goals with the most people, let them know what we're working on, um, and if, hopefully, that they can get on board with what we're doing, and there may need to be some, you know, some things have to come from somewhere else to help achieve these goals, and, but it, it benefits the most people, so, that's my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, would you like to offer something?
I mean, I think where my head's at with this is, um, is, is we got to find some way to, uh, synthesize this down to, like, three or four things that really need to get done within the next year. For example, wastewater treatment plant is a very high priority. We need to have a real concrete dialed-out plan, financing options, and really know where we're going with this, and, and stay ahead of it, so we can be proactive and, and control costs the best way. We need to have more of a CIP-oriented budget, uh, so that we can pay for everything I've heard here today. All these things cost money, you won't be able to pay for it unless we find a way to cut costs, increase revenue, you know, through, through various, uh, different options. One, another goal, I think that's very heavyweight on everyone, is a, um, streamlined planning and building department, um, and then also to address the sphere of influence and urban growth boundary type items. I just feel like these are all high-pressure items in the community right now.
Okay, so several things that are coming up. Those are more goals than...
Well, I'm just trying, you, you can have these goals, but it could take you 10 years to get a goal done. Do, do we want to wait 10 years to finish the...
So priorities, what you're saying.
That's, I'm trying to, like, give a little, like, what goals can staff reasonably get done this year that's going to make this council feel successful? You know, if, if, if we're here two years from now, and we're still mowing around ideas around the wastewater treatment plant, are we successful? You know, so that's just where I'm trying, I'm trying to, you know...
Okay, so, uh, let's, here's something that you haven't heard yet, uh, Councilmember Johnson, um, pick an item and we'll...
Oh, I was just going to say, I was going to say, just clear, um, consistent communication between, um, the city manager and the council, and also, uh, the updates on timing of projects and the certain goals that we're talking about, that we're going to make our priority just, uh, a constant update, and, um, knowledge of exactly what's going on with these projects, and, and I think, I mean, part of that's already starting to happen, so...
Okay. Councilmember De Niv.
We started by talking about visions, and those are all great ideas, the, the direction, the end goal that we want to achieve, but what we really need to do now is focus on strategy, because as Mayor Toussaint had said, you can talk about vision all you want, but if you don't have the right strategy, you will not succeed. And that's typical of any business, that's typical of any sports team, you've got to have the right strategy, and then you've got to, that determines the kind of resources that you require to achieve the, uh, strategy and the vision. So to me, focus on strategy is huge, and then having the right goals in terms of, for me, a goal is nothing more than a metric, having, in terms of showing what you achieved in trying to achieve, uh, fulfill your strategy. So, start with the strategy, make sure that it, everybody's on board with it, uh, get the right buy-in from all the decision-makers, and, and set the right goals, short-term, intermediate, and long-term, so everybody knows what they're working for, they're prioritized correctly, and that we can get this done within a timeframe that we can all, uh, get behind.
Okay, any other, uh, any others that you wanted to add that you, came to your mind that you didn't have a chance to put in here?
No, I mean, I think, um, Councilmember De Jornis's, uh, focus on strategy, how will we get these things done with appropriate prioritization and resources, kind of piggybacks off of Mayor Toussaint's, um, uh, pick a realistic number of items that we really feel that we can, um, accomplish. So I think those kind of go together.
Okay.
Not really. I, I'm not disagreeing with you to be disagreeable, I'm simply saying, every goal has a strategy, or every vision has a strategy, so if you have three or four things you want to get done, you need a strategy for each one of those things.
Okay, well, I was seeing, I was looking at the big picture of, of strategy, and his strategy was to select the most important items realistically what we could achieve.
Well, that's...
And you are, you're drilling now. It's okay.
And that's why I wanted, that's why I appreciated what you had said, and I wanted you to repeat that at the beginning of the, the session that we had, I guess a week ago, can't remember anymore. There's, there's, the words mean things, right? There's a vision which says, here's the direction we want to go in, here's the end game, the result that we want to achieve. The strategy is how do we get there, and that can encompass a variety of things, in terms of, as well as prioritizing, right? That's a major function of strategy. And then finally, you get to goals, and goals are the benchmarks by which you can say, we are this close to achieving our, our vision. That's why I try to use those words in that manner. Um, I hope I'm not confusing anybody, but rather just the opposite.
Well, and I think strategy is also a really important element to, uh, eventually dial out for each one of the goals, because it's, it's an important item for the, for you want the council to support it, you know, you want staff to be supporting it, and you want the community to understand what that strategy is, so that you're being, you're communicating with transparency, why is that we're doing what we're doing to try to achieve some, you know, and desirable end result.
Yeah, and for example, I believe that we do need a conference center. Everybody that we talked to, Daniel and I, when we talked to, to the different community leaders, um, they all felt that we needed to do something to encourage midweek, um, attract midweek tourism. To do that, we probably need a conference center that would then bring in corporate, um, conferences, that kind of thing. That then drives revenue, and that then allows us to achieve our, our, our vision. So that's why I, I keep focusing on vision, strategy, and goals. And that, I'm sorry, then that brings us to, well, how many hotels do we need to support the conference center? So all these things kind of go in sequence, and some of them concurrently.
Yeah, so I, I think I was just hearing the, the, some different applications of the idea of strategy. You were speaking to the strategy for the efforts... Overall...
Yes.
And you're speaking about what the strategy is that's driving individual goals.
Yes.
Uh, so I, I think there's difference of, of level that you were looking at in the discussion. Okay, uh, so this actually brings a question here, um, you've come up with, like, let's see, I haven't done the final count, uh, but it feels like it must be something like seven or so different goals. Would you, we can do a quick prioritization exercise where we would, uh, number these goals, and you would, in essence, put down on an index card, you know, your pick of the top four, and we'll see if you're in agreement, uh, you know, about what those top three or four, you pick the number might be, uh, to see if there's a further prioritization that you'd like to have, uh, happen. The alternative is, I guess you could leave it with the, with the list of goals that you have, see what staff comes back to you with, is there capacity, uh, and if, uh, the capacity is a constraint in achieving the goals to the level that you are expressing interest, then that might push you at that point to a prioritization of, okay, how far do you want to, you know, can you go, could you go further on one thing that's especially important to you if you eased up, whoops, eased up on something else? That might be, you know, going through the same eye of the needle, if you will, of, of staff time and, and preparation, et cetera. So there's a couple ways that you could approach this, I don't know, David, do you have a feeling in terms of what you need from the council today to go forward with your development of work plans and other things to go behind this? Would it be helpful to you if, if the council picked three or four things as major city goals and others as other important goals, and you differentiate it in that way, or is that not important at this point in time? What, what do you need from council to help, um, have the kind of execution that the council's wanting here by focus? Am I picking up what the, what you were raising, Mr. Mayor, as your point, and would that be helpful to get some input from staff about that?
Yeah, I mean, there's, uh, I, I can't speak for the city manager, obviously, but, you know, all these things, um, are going to come down to staff resources, and, I mean, you could have four different primary goals here that happen to be all around one department, and you're basically asking them to, again, you know, uh, push everything through a, a very, uh, tight needle, but, um, so, I don't know, I, I, that would kind of defer more to you, but I think some of the different strategies, I mean, eventually, I would really like to see something more comprehensive, um, where you really outline your, your goals and your vision, and, and then followed by that, we start identifying... followed by that, we start identifying some of the strategies and things that the, that the council and staff can be working on to further in the community.
And as I highlighted when, when we started out, that's the plan. And so when, when we go to our executive retreat in July, we will be spending two days talking specifically about, okay, what, what are the action plans? What are the steps needed in order to deliver on these? What are those critical timeframes for any aspect of those? And when we come back to council, that's when, that'll be the first time for you then to have some weigh-in or total weigh-in then on what that timeframe looks like. So as, as I think Don's trying to highlight is, sometimes throughout the course of the year, things change, right? And so it would be really helpful for us, particularly in light of, are, are all of these goals right on one department? Or are they spread evenly? And, and, you know, from my perspective, I think there is a pretty good spread right now of these, certainly, you know, growth and development is, is probably the largest part of all of this, but I think, right, I mean, just my sense is right now it's a good spread. And so if there was an opportunity for the council to prioritize at least the top three so that we know, that's always helpful. But we, we also haven't yet, I mean, you know, I'm going to have to work with the staff to figure out what, you know, those timelines are overall for this work plan. So I'm, I'm flexible for what works best with you. If you want to see the draft outline of what that work plan looks like when we come back in August, or if you would prefer now to give some prioritization, one way or the other, I'm, I'm good with. I, I want to make sure we're delivering what you're looking for. I mean, very clearly I heard that in the next, you want to know, how are we within the next year delivering on some of these items? And that's where, you know, we, we'll put our brains together and bring you something that shows you exactly how that'll happen.
Is there a way you can copy and paste all those items into the list?
Yes, I have, what I would do is, I could very quickly, I don't know, do we have any capacity here? Well, I could, I could put it all on a sheet and number them.
Yeah.
And then you just, we have some index cards here, you just write down, hey, here are your top three.
That's fine. I can't remember them, yeah.
All tallied, and we'll, we'll be there. But let me just get a read. What's the, is there an interest among the council in figuring out top three or four key priorities of this list of seven or however many that you've come up with? Just raise your hand if you're interested in doing that.
I think it's worth taking a look at, sure.
All right.
If I could add, I, I don't see what's wrong with going one through 10, but knowing what your top three are, just to see where the rest of the council sits on the, the balance of what we've just taken so much time to discuss today.
That's a...
Or not.
We could do it that way as well. What I, so let me suggest this. I think this could work if I can, what I'll do is I'll very quickly number these.
Can you just copy and paste to another slide? And then you can number them as you like, doesn't matter.
Oh, you mean the headlines?
Yeah, just the headline.
Okay, sure. Hang on.
Sorry, was that, sorry, was that? Yeah, maybe we should take a short bathroom break while you work on that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's a great idea.
It's my idea.
It's Robert's idea, yeah.
Okay.
That makes it a lot more, a lot easier to get this done.
Can I get you a cup of coffee?
So I'm just going to give them one party.
No.
Yeah.
I'll take it.
Yeah, I'm going to...